Good evening, it's seven o'clock and I'd like to call the Wabashia City Council meeting. To, uh...
Heather, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to, uh, members of our, uh, chambers, our guests. I'm gonna mix it up just a bit tonight and, uh, since our last meeting in September, said, many citizens of the USA have experienced severe losses. Property losses in Puerto Rico, property and, uh, loss of lives in Puerto Rico, lives in Las Vegas. So I'm gonna ask for a moment of silence from the Wabashia City Council in remembrance of these people who are suffering and died. Thank you. With these losses, many Americans are a bit anxious and nervous as we may well be ourselves. So I ask that we all be kind to one another, be a little bit patient with one another as we, as a country go through this. We have an esteemed guest speaker this evening. Mr. Tim Penny, CEO of Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation. Tim, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I do have a packet that I'll distribute next day. And you can look this over at your leisure.
Thank you.
This includes some of the literature that describes, uh, the foundation's programming and I think last year's annual report is in. So again, look that over when you have time. I do appreciate the opportunity to come back every so often and, uh, visit with the city council about, uh, the work of our foundation in this southern Minnesota region. Uh, our foundation, as I have mentioned, uh, during my past visits, uh, has been around for thirty years now, actually thirty-one years. Uh, we came into existence in the middle of the farm crisis and, uh, were seeded at that time by the McKnight Foundation, which was then the largest family foundation here in the state of Minnesota because they were determined to find a way to provide assistance to rural Minnesota, which was losing tens of thousands of farmers and many of our smaller towns were hurting. And so the creation of our foundation along with five other foundations, uh, was their way of providing some resources to rural Minnesota to, uh, explore investments that would create a new future for our rural regions. Our foundation, as you can see by the map in the annual report, uh, covers a twenty county region in south-central southeastern Minnesota. Everything from New Ulm on the west to the river towns here on the east and virtually everything south of the metro area to the Iowa border. Uh, for me, and I've mentioned this when I've been here in the past, it is somewhat of an affair of the heart at this stage in my life because that geography that the foundation serves is essentially the same, uh, region that I had the privilege of serving when I was in Congress from this part of Minnesota. Uh, we do three things at the foundation. We invest, um, heavily in early childhood because we believe that's a long-term bet and a quality workforce for southern Minnesota. And some of those investments, uh, obviously have flown to your county, uh, along with the other nineteen counties in our region. Among those are the training programs that we offer every year to early childhood providers. Uh, we give them business training, we give them academic training, and what they're doing with these preschool-aged children and get them ready for kindergarten. Uh, we have a book program, uh, where we distribute upwards of fifty thousand early learner reading books every year to reading programs across the region. Some of those books have come to your local school district over time and every one of the Kiwanis Clubs in southern Minnesota participates in that book program. Uh, we also, um, have a variety of grant programs that we offer, uh, to, um, communities with, uh, early childhood goals, uh, and, uh, provide those grant dollars for them to move toward those goals. Uh, the second area of our work is entrepreneurial investments. Uh, we just completed our third or fourth annual Entrepreneur Bridge Conference down in Austin, where we bring together a group of about fifty of our loan clients every year to give them additional training and support. Uh, we also do twenty-five to thirty small business or early-stage business expansion loans every year, often in partnership or in referral from a bank or an EDA. Um, and so those are the ways that we invest in, um, entrepreneurial activity. Um, one of those, um, areas of emphasis is local foods, which is a growing sector here in southern Minnesota. Uh, and in addition to lending and some grant-making in that space, we also host along with Renewing the Countryside, uh, and other organizations, an annual local foods festival at the Rochester Civic Center and have about a hundred local food producers and processors exhibit there. And about thirty, forty, sometimes even fifty buyers will come to sample that stuff and it can result in some purchase contracts. We did have seventeen hundred people come through that event, uh, last December and it'll be held again this December on Saturday, December 2nd. So that's a lot, an awful lot of customers here in southern Minnesota. They're getting, uh, more exposure to local foods that are being produced and processed here. Uh, we've been involved in some loans in your community in past years. Uh, one, I'll admit, was not so successful, KNC Fisheries, where we thought they were gonna turn carp into wallets and things of that sort. Uh, so we don't always hit a home run with the loans we invest in. It was the right idea, but because of a dispute with a supplier of refrigeration equipment they need, uh, that, that company struggled. Uh, but we were happy to partner, uh, try and bring those jobs to your community. Um, KIS Fashions is another, um, I think it's down on Main Street, uh, in one of those, uh, buildings down there. And then Cabin Coffee is a more recent loan client that we've been involved with. So I always, when I come here and I don't wanna take up a lot more time because you've got a big agenda, uh, just remind you and your city planner, the, city administrator, keep us in mind if there are other opportunities where we can be helpful with some of these business enterprises in your town. Last but not least, our third area of work is to help smaller towns create and maintain community funds because we believe that's a way that they can invest in their own future. We are up to now twenty-seven community funds that are under our umbrella. We provide matching dollars to help them, uh, grow their endowments. We provide some matching dollars for activities that they invest in within their communities. Uh, and, uh, we do, I always say, the headachey stuff, uh, the IRS reporting, all of that. Um, and then we allow their endowment funds to be invested alongside our endowment funds so that it keeps the investment fee very low for these community funds. And Wabashia Kellogg Area Community Fund has been with us for a while and in the last four or five years, they've really reinvigorated and done some interesting things. We partnered with them, um, on, um, a library project, uh, not too long ago, uh, and some other projects over time. Uh, and Bob from the community fund is here, if you wanna step up and just, uh, say, uh, a little bit about the community fund. But one thing we can do, um, is this can also be an umbrella for other funds, uh, to be, uh, to, to flow through the community fund, um, status so that if you had a fundraising activity that was important to the town, uh, on a tax-deductible basis, the community fund could serve that purpose for an important project in town. And, um, thank you for your leadership of the local fund and working with us.
Thank you, Tim. Yeah, I wasn't planning on talking, but since you've called me up here. Um, you guys have heard me before and we've talked about what we've done and, uh, the Wabashia Kellogg Area Community Foundation has been real active and, and we've, uh, contributed a lot to the community, I think. And we wouldn't have been able to do that without their, our parent company, Smith. Uh, they really, they allow us essentially, the money that, that's donated through, through, uh, the community is a hundred percent of it's given back because with their matching funds and, uh, their work with our tax, tax things and things that we don't know anything about and they do that for us for, for little or no cost. So it works out really well that we were able to, to just give all the donation back to the community. So we're, and like I say, if you guys have different ideas on different things that we can do, uh, we're, we're all, all ears for that. So we do, just got through with our ice cream social and, and handing out checks for the local giving day. Uh, that was very successful, it was about twenty-two thousand dollars that we raised for these local service organizations. And just a plug, we do have a, a will and estate meeting coming up at the high school and you, we found out there's about eighty percent of Americans do not have wills or estates and it's a pretty important thing. So we're doing a, uh, event at the high school, October 11th at seven o'clock. You can sign up through Community Ed and it's open to everybody, so, uh, hopefully we'll, we'll see out there. But, uh, thanks, Tim.
So thank you, Bob, um, and for your leadership of the local fund. Um, so those are the three areas of our work, early childhood, entrepreneurship, and, uh, support of community funds in our region. Uh, and some examples of some of the partnerships we've had and the funding we've provided to Wabashia and the greater Wabashia area. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor or members of the council. Um, otherwise, I know you do have a busy agenda, so I won't be offended if you move.
And Wabashia Kellogg has been involved in all three of those areas, having the early childhood.
We have, um, over time, we, we have partnered with, uh, the school district and the city and worked with the community fund, uh, on, on, uh, a variety of projects here in town in, in all three categories of our work.
Tim, thanks for what you do.
Yeah, thank you. And I just wanna mention in closing, uh, we raise about ten percent of our budget locally from county, cities, corporations, banks, individuals. That means ninety percent of our five million dollar, uh, budget each year is, is money we're essentially bringing into this region. So, uh, we like to say that's a good return on investment for this southern Minnesota region and, and thank you for the chance to come and visit again today.
Good.
All right.
Thank you.
Take care.
And Dr. Bob, thank you for your work. When you having the next ice cream? When's your next ice cream social?
We just had it, so you missed it, but, uh...
Oh, I was there, I got a pumpkin.
That's true. I think that's right. Ice cream and cookies, too.
Yeah. All right, at this time, I would, uh, move on to public comments. If anyone in the, uh, room would like to address the, uh, council about any topic on your mind, how to make Wabashia a better place to live, going once, twice. I do see a face in the audience that I wish she would come and introduce herself. And thank you.
Hi, uh, my name's Amanda Murphy. I'm with Wabashia Ambulance. Um, I started here in, um, April. Um, I was your first full-time hire. Uh, I'm proud that I could be your first, uh, full-time EMT working here. I have, um, ten years' experience working, um, elsewhere. And, um, as of right now, I'm filling in the shoes, um, as your EMS director with the help of John Friedmeyer and Tim Walrich. Um, and it's, it's been great, um, working here and I just moved into my house here out on the prairie about two weeks ago. So I moved my whole family over here just for this job and it's, my girls are seven and five at Wabashia Kellogg School and they love the school and I've made tons of new friends here and everyone's been great and very supportive. Um, so I want to thank you all and...
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council members, any changes or additions that you'd like to, uh, make at this point?
Just to clarify a couple of things, Mayor. Under the consent agenda, the parking regulation, we had a little bit of an updated version. Um, we supplied a version that was previously changed. Um, so nothing, uh, in the addition of the truck routes is changing, except, uh, there were some previous ones omitted. So WX and Y are just renumbered, um, or relettered, I suppose. And then, secondly, the ATV, UTV, as well as the, um, golf cart ordinance, we added, uh, in addition to the permitting that was on there, that the decals, the stickers be in the bottom-left corner of the, uh, of the vehicle. So those are two changes that we, uh, that we added there.
We'll get to in the consent agenda.
I'd like to ask some questions about the ATV, UTV thing, so...
Me too.
Can we pull that out?
When we get to the consent agenda, uh, we'll give it a poll.
Okay.
Any other changes or additions? The, uh, mayor's presentation will be very brief tonight, but it's all full of good news. The Wabashia Kellogg Homecoming Football Game Evening was a success. The Minnesota Twins are playing tonight. We don't know yet how much of a success, but I do know that, uh, Mr. Todd and Mr. Penny came to town this evening and they just exclaimed what a beautiful community we have. And if you were downtown Saturday, you'd have thought you were at the Minnesota State Fair. It was gorgeous, it was busy, uh, it was, uh, All-American Chamber of Commerce Day. So those are the good news. John, how about, uh, telling us about what's going on at, uh, Port Authority?
Port Authority, we met, um, on Tuesday, the nineteenth. Uh, we, we meet, the third Tuesday of every month here in City Hall. Um, a couple of things, we paid bills. Uh, most of the discussion in our general business was with respect to goals or additional new goals, um, going forward, as well as discussion, which is on the, um, in general business, uh, you know, the Glander Building and Transfer Building. So we talked about that when we get down there. Uh, some of the other goals that we talked about, um, first and foremost was the, uh, bonding request for 2018. Um, the, the Port Authority is the, uh, shepherding that for, on behalf of the city, National Eagle Center and all of our development. So that's real important and we talked about different ways that maybe the community, we can show some community involvement or support. And, uh, I think in the coming weeks, we'll work on how maybe we can make that work. Um, we talked about the Gander Building, we talked about other properties as well. Um, uh, Mosquito Field or the field that's adjacent to, uh, the grocery store is one of those. Um, we spent some time a number of years ago getting it set up or surveyed in such a fashion to understand if it was actually a marketable piece of property and it actually is. Um, so it's a good commercial piece of property. Um, so we talked about that. Um, we also talked about helping to further develop our funding mechanism for gap loans and short-term loans, uh, for maybe prospective new businesses in the community. Um, we struggle every year to kinda grow our fund and I think maybe at a workshop in the near future, we could maybe talk about that a little bit more and maybe some options that we might be able to have as a, as a councilor, as a city, to, to help bolster that fund up. Um, as, as stands now, we don't have a lot of leverage or ability to, to help a lot of smaller industries or businesses that might just need a quick gap loan or something like that, so... So those are the items that we talked about.
Okay, and we'll get back to the, uh, two buildings, uh, later on in our general business area. Uh, Steve?
Uh, the utilities met today and, uh, outside of just general business, uh, Pat Mueller reported to us that, uh, the, the standing water on Grand Boulevard by the Marina was a, a leaking valve. It was an original, a hundred years old, and that's been replaced with a new one. And also, uh, the contractor that was running a new water main into the hospital, um, as long as they were there, there was another valve up there that was similar age and we changed that one out as well and, um, new fire hydrant up there. Um, other than that, it was just normal business, so that's all I have.
Okay, any questions for Steve? Craig?
Uh, the planning commission didn't meet last month, um, so I had the, uh, before we decided that, I had the planner poll all the members and nobody came up with anything. There were no applications, no new applications, so we, uh, postponed it. Uh, our next meeting will be next Tuesday, I presume that one is gonna go. And we're still working on the zoning ordinance, rewriting that. There's a subcommittee working on rewriting the zoning ordinance and we probably need to, uh, meet just to get caught up with where we're at with that. And we did talk a little bit about parking with the city planner and we might talk more about that to downtown.
Any questions for Craig? Tony?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, park board met September 26th. Um, we talked about, we had a commu-, or a community garden update from, um, Ivan Nelson and she kinda helps, um, run that little section of the, of the parks. Um, so between the two community gardens, we talked about soil improvements, um, how next year's gonna work, some rule changes. Nothing too big there. Um, we, we talked about campground docks again and, uh, we talked about the Emerald Ash Borer in the parks. And, uh, we are going to go through the, um, parks in Wabashia and mark out, um, trees to keep and trees for removal. And, uh, the, with the trees, the ash trees that we keep, that could, say for instance, Malone Park is heavily, it's probably ninety percent ash trees down there. Um, we are going to select certain trees in the park that provide the most shade and they're in the best, uh, shape. We're gonna have them treated and then we're gonna start replanting, uh, removal and then replanting some other species down there. Uh, campground lighting, uh, so, so the road that goes through the campground, there's some dark spots in there that we would like to, um, provide, uh, some light. So I'm, uh, talking to Excel to get some pricing on a couple of streetlights in that area. Um, street commission met today. Um, we had some requests for some signs, um, dead-end sign. Uh, we had a streetlight request on Cooley Way, a fifteen-minute parking sign downtown. We talked about the 2019 mill and overlay. Um, Brian, myself and Chad have been working on, uh, redoing the street survey map. So the overall condition of every street in town, uh, we went through and rated those and, uh, basically took the list and went from, went from the worst to the most tolerable and made a priority list. And, uh, Brian is gonna work with getting so, some numbers for that, so we can put that in the capital improvement plan and kinda get a, a estimate of what we're gonna spend in 2019 on that. Um, last thing was truck route addition. That's in your agenda packet tonight. There's basically three blocks of three different streets that we wanna add. Um, basically some connector streets that are being used by, um, trucks and have been for years, so we just wanna put that on the, the truck route list and that is it. And if you got any questions?
Where'd the park commission come down on, uh, public access to the fishing docks?
The docks, um, we had some discussion on it and it didn't last too long, but, um, they voted unanimously, unanimous.
Everybody voted.
Everybody voted in favor to keep them private due to the money that was used, what we make from income and future problems if we let other people down there. You know, if people are trying to use the docks for the campground and people are there fishing, um, different things like that. So, um, it's not to say that we might look sometime in the future to do a fishing dock somewheres, but when we look at having Malone Park, um, and some other docks around by the Eagle Center and different things for fishing, that's kinda supposed to serve the public as well, so...
Tony, can we fish off the city, uh, the city docks that we rent out? Is that, is that open for fishing?
Uh, no. Um, not, not, not the ones that we rent out for slips. And then there's no fishing on the DNR docks either. Um, the fishing docks would be the Eagle Center on the Mississippi, in front of the Eagle Center and then Malone Park, that big platform out there. Um, yeah, and whatever shoreline is around all over, but, um, that's pretty much it. There's, there's some where you can and some you can't, um, so...
And the park board is looking at, uh, um, uh, future upgrades, eggs park for fishing, stuff like that. I met with Tony and, uh, Chad today and, uh, because I originally brought this up, this concern up and, uh, um, and I'm, I'm satisfied with the explanation I got, is that it's a campground, it's not a park. Um, and, uh, you know, and, you know, I got thinking about it and every campground I go to, uh, you know, you gotta pay to get in. And if you pay five bucks, like Nugget Lake, you, you pay five bucks, you get in, you can, you can fish off the dock, but otherwise you can't, so... And, uh, I kinda have a sour feeling in my mouth about it, but, but I agree, right? That's the way it is, so, um, so I, um, I decided to, uh, bring it up tonight, so, but...
Brian, anything you'd like to add tonight?
No, not tonight.
Okay. Administrator's report, Mr. Chad Springer.
We've had a few meetings for many different topics. One of the ones I wanted to talk about...
Hey, Tim. Good night, Doctor.
Uh, one of the, one of the items I wanted to talk about is the county, uh, met with us about repaving, uh, the remainder of County Thirty out in front of, uh, the grocery store in town. Uh, they're gonna apply for some LRIP funding. Um, and Tony, myself and Brian met with Dietrich this week to talk about, uh, the intersection improvements on Bridge Avenue as part of that, uh, of that grant submission. So, um, we're gonna get some drafts of some preliminary designs, uh, that will be included in that, uh, grant submission and then from there, um, based on the timing, we may be looking at calling, uh, a special council meeting, um, to review those because the grants due first part of November and we might not have our meeting before that, but we'll see. Uh, we'll look at the timing with that. We might be able to just submit to, um, if the council approves that grant, uh, application, we might be able to just submit it a few days late since it's just an add-on. So, um, we've been continuing to look at the budget, um, in response to what you were talking about, John. I think, uh, while I plan in November to have an agenda item in the regular council meeting to take any last... I'll take input all month, uh, but any last, uh, discussion that we can have on the agenda so we can get clo-, uh, closer to a, um, a final budget for the December meeting. So, uh, that's, uh, that's continuing to be worked on. Um...
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, I, I would support that, maybe even having it sooner than December because, uh, in looking at some of these things, some of the numbers are run, overrunning in a few areas. And it'd be nice to look at it like from the, after the third quarter, where we're at, said that with the third quarter. Is it possible to do it at the, uh, at the end of October before the November meeting?
To do a meeting for the budget?
Yeah. Um... Not so much to set next year's budget, but it, you know, I'm looking at some of the expenditures and I'm wondering, some of these are running over and you probably have a good reason for it, but it'd just be nice to have some explanation.
Yeah, we can do that as a, as a workshop or we can even just respond to you directly on those. Because we look at them monthly as well and there's, again, there is reasons for some of it. Some of it's picked up in other areas as well, so...
Right.
Yeah, um...
To satisfy what you're looking for, Craig, I wonder if just one-on-one with the administrator, uh, would answer...
And you're right, that, that could well do it, yeah.
Do it that way until we get to the...
I'll just get with you, Chad, and we'll set out an hour sometime.
That sounds good, perfect.
Yeah.
We have, uh, kind of a task force, uh, in addition to having Amanda step in for the emergency services sector. We've got a kind of a task force going right now, uh, with our chief of police, our fire chief, uh, Mr. Friedmeyer, uh, Mr. Tim Walrich, um, looking at, uh, you know, what's our emergency sector gonna look like going into the future. So we have one meeting, we got another one coming up the sixteenth to parallel that. We're posting for a director and, uh, there's gonna be some first responder-type classes going on, uh, in parallel with that. But there's a lot of, a lot of joint pieces where all three parties are involved, where we need to work through some, uh, uh, maybe some hiccups or some other questions that they've had, uh, within those three, three areas. So that's been going good so far. Um, newsletter, uh, that was in the, um, on the back of the last bill and it's also on the website under city government, city newsletters, if people are interested in it, just some, uh, quarterly updates that we provide, so...
Yeah, I talked to, uh, county engineer today and found out, yeah, that they, they have changed the designation of Shields Avenue, so I thank you for the clarification there. Um, but, uh, you also mentioned that they are thinking about doing some of those improvements to intersection of Bridge and Grant and the intersections of Hiawatha and Bridge Avenue. Those are the intersections that were more or less preventing the, or at least it was a, a hindrance to this frac sand people because they had to make those improvements. However, those improvements are needed at those intersections. Uh, I turn my bus at those intersections, my school bus, and I know that, um, it's, it's hard to make those turns. And I've watched semis make those turns, coming along Bridge and then turning onto Hiawatha and they're way over the yellow line. Uh, I've also seen an awful lot of pedestrians walking along the shoulders there, trying to cross the slough next to the, the guardrail there and it's, it's narrow, uh, and it can, you can get squeezed down and it's, it's not, it's not really a safe situation. So I'm hoping that we can find a safe way to get pedestrians to cross the slough because at one time we talked about extending the culvert and throwing a sidewalk in there. Um, those are the kinda things I think would, would be beneficial to everybody in, in the city.
And sidewalk was a discussion on that as well. And John, for Mosquito Field, um, extension of services is also part of that plan as well, so... is also part of that plan as well, so.
Thank you, Craig, thank you, Chad, uh, we'll move on to the consent agenda and I'll read the consent agenda and then if someone wants to pull. But item eight, uh, the consent agenda, which tonight includes the approval of the, uh, regular council minutes of the twenty and the twenty-fourth budget workshop minutes, temporary on sale liquor license for Arjack, Minnesota lawful gambling application for raffle for the Wabashakalig Prom, park board memorial donation program, first reading of the amendments to the ATV and golf cart ordinances and these were updated, uh, earlier this evening, and the first reading of the truck route addition, that has been updated and then finally the warrants. A motion to accept the, uh, consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
I'd, uh, and I'd like to see if we can pull item number five for discussion.
Pull item five? Eight-five?
First reading of the amendments to the ATV and golf cart ordinance?
Gotcha. Any other? Okay, motion to, um, approve the consent agenda with the exception of, um, eight point five. Somebody help me out.
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign, moving on. Public hearing, none, general business. Two thousand sixteen street project, uh, assessment, and Brian, I believe we're gonna get some help from you on this one, right?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, council members, as you're aware, we completed construction on the twenty sixteen street improvement project this summer. There were two contracts as a part of that project, the Millan overlay street portion and then the sewer lining portion of the project. There are several documents in your packet, I'd call your attention to the schedule, uh, first, so, um, this is the schedule we followed for the project and we're down near the end and the last step in the project is to run the assessment process as a part of the project. Um, there are a couple of resolutions that are required to be passed, um, declaring the cost to be assessed and ordering the preparation of the assessment roll and then, uh, a resolution calling for a hearing on the proposed assessment. Um, so that would be the action, uh, tonight, that would be in front of you, those two resolutions. We also included in the packet, we've actually, uh, prepared, uh, the final assessment roll and, uh, I'd call your attention to that document, the last page for s- some numbers. Um, the total project cost, uh, was one point five million dollars. Um, the, uh, the estimated cost of the project back when we presented the, the project to the public, the last public hearing was one point eight million dollars, so the project did come in uh, under the, uh, the budgeted amount. Uh, the assessments themselves, um, we have two parts to the assessment, we have a sewer assessment, which is the CIPP, cured and placed pipe, uh, number, um, the assessment rate for that uh, comes in at nineteen hundred ninety-two dollars, um, the per lot or per residential equivalent unit, um, assessment for the Millan overlay portion of the project came in at thirteen hundred twenty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents. Um, so the total of those two together, if you had a lot that received both a sewer assessment and a street assessment would be uh, thirty-three hundred and twenty-two dollars. Uh, the numbers that we gave the public, uh, back, uh, at the public meeting, the last numbers they saw was a range between thirty-seven hundred and four thousand dollars, so the assessments, uh, that would be finalized here were, would be less um, than what the public was, uh, told to expect, uh, back when the project was initiated. Um, the two resolutions again, um, the first is declaring the cost to be assessed and ordering the preparation of the proposed assessment. Um, this has a bunch of data in it, um, the total amount uh, to be assessed to property owners is two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, uh, seven hundred dollars, uh, the city portion of the project is one point two million. Uh, there are a couple of blanks in here that need to be filled in, uh, the period of the assessment and the, uh, the interest rate for the assessment. Um, what I would, uh, tell you is, uh, the twenty fourteen project, when you establish the assessments for that project, uh, you did a ten-year term and you did a three point seven-five percent interest rate. So those would need to be determined, uh, as a part of this resolution, the interest rate and the, and the assessment term. Um, the, the next resolution calling for the hearing, the hearing, uh, would be scheduled for, uh, your November seventh meeting and you'd have to establish a time for that as a part of the resolution.
Chad, what about the date on the interest rate?
I would suggest staying with the same as we've done.
Same as in the past?
Yes.
Okay.
Three point seven-five. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's appropriate and the time length as well.
Ten years? What, um, what portion of the cost to be assessed against the benefited property owners, how does that, is that a percent? Can we use a percent to figure that amount?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, twenty percent, yeah.
Twenty percent?
Did you say twenty, Brian?
Yep, twenty percent of the assessable cost are assessed for both the.
That's our approval policy.
Yeah, and you know what, John, we should mention that that has been, we've been consistent on that, uh, the last several projects.
One back to two thousand thirteen?
Yeah. So.
And that's also the lowest we can go.
That's correct, if we wanna do any bonding. Um, just, uh, uh, review, Chad or, or, uh, Sue, what are the options for paying that, uh, thirty-nine hundred? I think that's what it is. Thirty-seven hundred?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three twenty-two, what are the options as far as time, amount and penalties and so on?
The, the amount, help me, but there's not many of them that have the double assessment, there's a few, but, um.
Well, there's, there's quite a few that pay both the sewer and the street assessment.
But it's, they, they have the ability to pay it all upfront.
Yep.
Or it can be assessed against your taxes for ten years, at which anytime you can pay that off.
Right.
Anytime you want, or it gets paid off at the sale, uh, or transfer of, of a home.
If they pay within thirty.
Or a piece of property.
They pay within thirty days of you, uh, adopting the assessment, there's no interest.
Interest, yeah.
Uh, they can pay, prepay before it goes on their taxes and there's a small amount of interest calculated or once it goes on the taxes, then, um, then it's, then it's.
Pro-rated interest rate based on when you pay it.
Yep.
And then there. I asked this question once before, um, seems to me that there's a provision for elderly of, of certain age or over, um.
There is, Dean, and it has been used.
What, what is that?
Exact wording, I think you have to be sixty-five.
We, well, w- we have that language, I don't have it with me right now, but that will be presented at the assessment hearing.
I think the important thing is that people know there are options.
Yep.
And they, they can get answers.
They can put it on their taxes, is what it amounted to.
That's one option, yes.
For.
But the senior that Dean is talking about, uh.
State law, state law provides for, uh, a deferral, um, of the assessment and there are some procedures, uh, related to that. And I believe, I'll have to look to see, the cities have the option of having an ordinance that either allows or disallows that and I'm actually not familiar, I'll have to look at that, um, and we'll have that information prior to the assessment hearing for folks that are interested in that.
Dean, anything else on that?
Uh, no, no.
Okay. Then I'm gonna ask for a motion approving the, uh, resolution decaring, declaring cost to be assessed and ordering preparation of proposed assessments and the resolution for hearing on proposed assessments for the two thousand sixteen street project at the November seventh council meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Further disc, further discussion?
I was just gonna add in with the ten years and three point seven-five percent.
Yes.
Do we need to set a time for the hearing?
He said at the city council meeting?
Yeah, go for the date.
Seven o'clock. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Passed unanimously. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
You always make it easy until it comes to the payment.
That's the goal.
Okay, National Eagle Center Development Agreement. Back to this, y'all, we all received a copy of it. And Chad, I know you've been working on this, could you give us a little background?
Yeah, this was actually due here last month, but we missed it by a month and it's here, um, today. Uh, just to clarify, for exhibit A, A, B and C, uh, we're getting some maps drawn up for those. Um, A is the current building as it exists today for the NEC. Uh, exhibit B is the current plus, uh, in addition onto that building as well as the main street buildings. And, uh, C is the current building with the addition, the main street buildings and then the open space, the remainder of that land, uh, down on the riverfront. Uh, that's the city's parcel, so, uh, that's one point to make, other highlights of this, um, right off on two point one, the city shall remain the owner of the real property including the area encompassed by the project. Uh, that shouldn't be new. Under two point three A, the city, uh, these are some milestones and some dates I'd like to highlight. Um, the city and NEC have approved plans and specific specifications for the project with the preliminary plans and specs for the project submitted by the NEC by June thirtieth of two thousand eighteen. And final approval of such plans and specs submitted by the NEC by December of thirty, December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. Uh, if the state bonding is inadequate, the NEC shall have the right to extend the timelines herein, uh, by up to twelve months. Two point three B, the city has been provided with confirmation of financing and the city approves said financing that provides for the full payment for all design and construction costs for the project with the aid of the monies identified and confirmed by the NEC for this purpose, including the bond allocation. Uh, another key point, subject to reasonable consultation with the NEC, the city shall be solely responsible for all aspects of the design, construction, financing and improvements to Big Joe Alley as described in the documents submitted to the state of Minnesota for the state bonding application or allocation. The NEC is responsible for all costs of facility hookups to city utilities and electric, which is consistent. Um, point one A, the city shall follow re, the city shall, following reasonable consultation with the NEC, be solely responsible financing, designing, construction, the improvements referred to as Big Joe Alley and the improved riverfront dockage, both as described in the bond allocation request. And in that bond allocation quest, as a reminder, we put in one hundred percent of the cost for Big Joe Alley and, uh, the riverfront. Four point one, or four point two B, remit to the city the sum of five hundred thousand dollars payable in increments of not less than fifty thousand commencing on a to be term, commencing on a to be determined date with a payment schedule, but not later than December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen or other, such other date as the parties may agree, so that basically sets the deadline to receive the five hundred thousand.
That's a ten-year payback time?
No, that's a two-year payback.
Balloon.
Remit to the city for payable in increments of not less than fifty thousand.
Rather.
Commencing, but not later than twenty nineteen, oh, okay, twenty nineteen.
Yep, the full payment needs to be received by twelve thirty-one, two thousand nineteen.
Okay.
Um, C, under that same four point two, the obligation of the NEC shall be to commence construction of the project by three thirty-one two thousand nine, nineteen. Notwithstanding the foregoing, the NEC may extend that timeline for commencing the instruction by not longer than two years based on written notice to the city. Pending the commencement of construction, project shall be substantially completed by twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. Subject again to the maximum two-year extension as provided above. Uh, the NEC will convey title to the buildings located at one hundred Main Street, one-ten, one-sixteen and one-twenty-two to the city, which shall be leased back to the NEC upon completion of the project or as required by the state bond allocation. Um, another key point is article five under lease, and that's five point one, the city and NEC shall enter into a new lease to include the facility and project in a form acceptable to the city and NEC. The parties intend that the NEC will be granted a lease term of at least thirty years for the premises at no additional cost to the NEC based on the NEC's payment of the funds provided in section four point two B, which is again the successful payment of the five hundred thousand. The rest is typical default language, uh, administrative provisions.
So what, what were these, uh, uh, attachments, gonna be exhibit A and B?
Maps, just maps, uh, A's gonna be the current building. B will be again, the current plus the addition and then, uh, the main street buildings. And then C will be the current plans or the current building with in addition, the main street buildings and then the remainder of the riverfront lot, the point eight, four acres. That's not used for, uh, building expansion, uh, that would, you could consider plaza or open space.
When we talk about the lease, uh, right now, the, the Eagle Center is paying nothing to lease the National Eagle Center, is that correct?
Yes, true.
And, and the rest of these buildings, the same. And so, you know, in the future, provided that the National Eagle Center is, is capable of being profitable, um, it, in, at least in my mind, it wouldn't be a bad idea to have the lease be appropriate with what those buildings on Main Street would have generated in tax revenue. Um, now, that's, that's probably something that some people don't wanna hear, but it's something that some people do wanna hear. And so, um, uh, this lease agreement appears like it ties our hands for thirty years. Is that true, Chad?
Uh, if we enter into this development agreement, yes, um, uh, we, we do say that in, uh, in five, that, uh, the parties intend the NEC will be granted a lease term of thirty years at no ad- additional cost to the NEC based on the payment, full payment of those funds, the five hundred thousand.
If, if that was so, um, how would you determine what those buildings were, tax rates were in, uh, twenty twenty-four and so forth?
Well, that'd be easy, a tax assessor would just tell you that. I mean, uh, real estate taxes are based on value and, uh, and that's how the, the real estate taxes are determined. Now, of course, um, the school and the county are players as well, but I guess that's their problem, I'm worried about City Hall. And so, um.
Right now, they're, the buildings aren't worth that much and so the taxes are kinda low. After we get done, if this thing all goes through, those buildings will be rehabbed, one, the Juson Building will have an extra floor on it. So they'll be worth quite a bit more, so I don't think we could really tax them on.
This thing will be about seventeen to twenty million dollar deal when it's all done. And it'll be either some bonding money, private money.
And something could be worked out in as much as the taxes that they generate now add three percent to that each year, even though the, the building is gonna outpace what those taxes would have raised. Uh, s- set up a schedule, uh, cost of living, whatever you wanna call it, um, based on what they're generating now and each year. Cause we've all heard some repercussions about, uh, the city owning buildings downtown that were taxpayers.
They're generating about somewhere in the neighborhood fifteen hundred a year or something in taxes?
Right now, there's, it's just north of four grand, I think.
For all four?
It was twenty grand, uh, I think it's twenty grand is the total tax liability for.
And our, and our cut would be four.
Somewhere in there, and our, our cut is just north of four, I believe, somewhere in there. That was, that was dated, I can't remember the latest, that was, that was probably a year ago's numbers.
Steve, I like your thinking and, uh, I asked about that, same question, and I said, maybe I oughta take a look at it this way too, with, if the bonding money comes in and those buildings are refur- refurbished, rehabbed and the city owns them, what's that worth?
Well, it's, it worth, it's really worth nothing to us unless the Eagle Center defaults and we've got a building to sell.
But what does the Eagle Center, what value does the Eagle Center provide by spending that kind of money on that corner of Main Street? What kind of commerce does it bring by spending that kind of money on a corner of Main Street?
I don't know.
You know, and you, you were talking to town at twenty-five hundred, and we're gonna get a twenty million dollar improvement to our Main Street. You know, we're already doing eighty thousand customers a year in that building, as it stands. We're gonna have a museum that's gonna match anyone in the state. You know, we're gonna have open space that's gonna attract additional business. We're gonna have dockage for commercial, commercial boats, paddle boats, or whatever. I mean, uh, uh, we, I mean, it's, what are we, we're about four thousand dollars a year for? Really? I mean, look what we're getting out of this. That's, that's how I look at it.
Yeah, I, I still think it's a question that Steve asked and a lot of people do ask, and, uh...
And I have a different way of looking at it.
And we deal with it.
Yeah.
So we're giving up four thousand dollars a year in taxes?
Right. Well, we're not giving it up. It's being re-proportioned across the rest of the city.
My, my original statement, John, was provided that the Eagle Center is profitable.
Yeah. Well, how do we, I mean, how do we identify that? Cause it's a nonprofit, so I mean, they're supposed to punt, push their money back into exhibits or additional acquisitions and that kind of stuff. I mean, they're, I mean, they're in the black, if you will, or, or, you know, it's a nonprofit. They could, they can run red and run forever.
The only question I have now, Dean, is, uh, if we adopt the development agreement, we're locked into that, uh, that lease payment of a dollar. Would that be your understanding, Chad?
Yep, a- as it's written, yes.
Cause we extend that.
But also, um, they already own the buildings, um, so they're not paying any taxes. And let's say they didn't own the buildings, but, uh, um, Southeast Minnesota Initiative Foundation comes in, five oh one C three, and they buy them up. They're, we're still losing taxes all the time. You know, any five oh one C three that comes in and buys it, so, you know, uh, we don't really have any control over, over that, those type of corporations buying these buildings up and the benefit outweighs the four thousand dollars, I think.
So we're talking four thousand versus seventeen million, I guess, infrastructure investment?
Ryan, what are your thoughts? You, uh, bailed us out of a good one last, last month.
Um, I like the idea of leasing them for money at some point. I don't think we have to figure it out right now. Um, I don't think it's important that it be for the, the value that it was taxable either, that, I don't think it has to be that scientific. It can, it can be figured out at some point. So I think the question is right now, if that's something we want to explore, maybe we ratchet down the lease years or find a way to revisit it without pulling up the development agreement.
See, I, I would say, if, if, I think they need that kind of a lease agreement in order for them to attract donors.
That's a good point, too.
So, I mean, if we're looking at, you know, four thousand dollars a year, something to that effect, I mean, you know, that's something that we'll have to decide, if that's what the, if that's the appetite of the council.
Yeah. I mean, I like the idea of getting the money, but it's not gonna hold me up.
Okay.
It's just, I think the benefit does outweigh getting some kind of lease money for it. Um, in an ideal world, I think if we could figure out the point where they, they do well enough that we could get some benefit from it, that'd be great, but I can't figure out that exact point right now and the vehicle to get there.
And there's a, a conversation piece, benefit in lieu of taxes also. You know, if the, uh, Eagle Center were in a position that they could make a contribution to, say, the library or, uh, along the line of helping somebody else in town.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think the relationship is there between the city and the Eagle Center.
That's the thing we have to maintain.
Yeah, and it's just a matter of maintaining that relationship and maybe even asking at some point, if they're in a position to help.
Sure. Jeff, what are your thoughts?
I really don't know where this thirty years thing comes from. Does that have to do with, uh, isn't there some bonding requirements that if you do lease this out to some non-public entity, that it has to be a certain length of time, with fifty percent of the life or something associated with the, the project?
It's more about the operation. It's not, the, the thirty years is, was, the previous one was twenty, and we're in year nine, ten? Somewhere in there, ten. Um, and this, this one, uh, thirty was put forward.
And what would be wrong with, uh, having a five-year renewable lease to allow the city to actually revisit this every five years? You know, you know, you, you get ongoing leases that automatically renew and stuff, but at least if you had a five-year deadline, at least you could take a look at it. And maybe it's time to think about, you know, if we were concerned about getting revenue, maybe we've got to charge an admission tax. You know, they could pay ten percent on every ticket to the city, then at least they'd be paying something to the city since they don't pay anything now, don't support any of the services that the city provides, so, I'd...
Gotta add something, just from the city staff's standpoint for, um, like, maintenance. I don't know if it's spelled out in the contract, but any future maintenance, like, say roofing, if we're gonna own the buildings, you know, who's gonna pay for that? Maybe they do now, I don't know, but I just thought I'd mention it.
Yeah.
And just one other point that someone pointed out to me that I thought that, uh, property, the vacant lot was part of, is part of a TIF. So that, that was, the, the agreement was that that had to be developed commercially. If it's not developed commercially, won't the county come back and say, we want our million dollars in deferred taxes from the city? Isn't that how it works? Someone, you know, someone told me that.
Yeah, no, it's not how that works. Actually, this, the payment of, uh, of the five hundred thousand is a, is a economic development payment. It is, um, whereas the property, um, it's only got two years left of its TIF. So it's, and we wrote it down to zero from the city's perspective, so it's not, uh...
But what about the county's perspective?
We wouldn't have to pay it back, based on, on what this payment would reflect.
So the payment of five hundred thousand dollars from the Eagle Center just goes to pay off the TIF?
No, we're owning the land yet, so it's not like we're selling the land. This is development rights, so they're paying the five hundred thousand and they're not getting a title in return of the land. So the land stays categorized as it is.
So what, do we have any definite plans for that five hundred thousand dollars?
No.
Just ask me.
Yeah, I think some of you guys have spent it three times already.
And I have.
But no, there's no definite plans.
But I'm, I'm thinking of what Tony said, so there's, there's gonna be some maintenance on these buildings in the future.
Right, maintenance will all be written into the lease agreement, that it'll be the responsibility of the Eagle Center, such as it is today. They take on all liability in the, uh, in the current lease agreement of those buildings.
Okay. So that's, this is, this is the development agreement and not the le, there'll be a lease agreement?
That's correct. This is strictly the development agreement, half of the deal.
This takes us up until certificate of occupancy, and then the lease kicks over. And that, well, we'll start working on a lease as we get closer. And if we need to write that in, I'm certain the NEC would be acceptable to that, as that's how it exists today.
Other discussion. If not, I'm gonna ask for a motion approving the development and authorizing the city to enter into the agreement with the National Eagle Center.
So move.
Second.
And moved in second, further discussion? Further discussion, now would be the time, and we will roll that one. Sue?
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
Fried Meyer?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Moyer?
Yes.
Woodley?
Yes.
Holcomb?
Yes.
Sola?
No.
Okay, and that motion passes six to one. Moving on to item, general business ten three, the marketing of, uh, one twenty-eight Second Street and one forty-two Second Street. See what my notes say about that. That, of course, is where Papa's Barn is, pardon me?
You want me to kick this off?
That'd be great.
Several council members and, and the mayor as all, as well, we've talked about, uh, uh, these buildings from, for a long time now, and, uh, as what appears to be a project down on the riverfront moving in the direction that we just discussed, these buildings, uh, um, from the city's perspective, we've built a city garage that has, uh, taken all of our, uh, equipment needs. Uh, we're no longer, um, required to store anything in these buildings. Uh, we thought, the mayor and I thought now would be a good time to put this on the agenda for some discussion. Not looking for any action tonight. Maybe go through, uh, some discussion, get that out there on where, on where the council might be going with this, and then, uh, come back perhaps in November at a later date with, uh, a final plan or direction from the council, uh, most likely to the Port Authority for the, um, next steps in that land, so. This is known as the Glander and the Transfer Building, so, um, those are located on Second Street Market, uh, or one twenty-eight Second and one forty-two Second Street West Properties, so. John?
Uh, this was discussed at the Port Authority, so if you want to share a little bit about that discussion?
We were, as we were talking about goals, one of the things that the Port Authority is charged with is, is trying to, uh, assure that there's, uh, commercial or, or retail industrial development opportunities in this, in the community. And as we've kind of identified just now, that the direction of the riverfront is going a certain way, our possible needs, at least for additional parking, as that's why those buildings were bought in the first place, um, may slide more down the scale. So we're identifying these buildings as, th- these two parcels of land as an opportunity for the city to maybe, um, attract some kind of something, be it more retail, be it, uh, a business building, be it mixed use, be it a hotel. We might determine it needs to be a parking garage, I don't know, but, so, that's what the Port Authority was looking at. We would like to, to pursue that and see where it goes, where, where we can go with it.
Good idea. Sell them, if somebody wants to buy them, sell them.
I think part of that discussion, Steve, from my perspective, is, uh, that's an option, but not just to anyone. I think I'd like to have a kind of an idea of what type of business would go in that spot and that we recruit toward that type of business. Um, that's, that's just how I'm looking at it. When I go to seminars and webcasts and so on, that's kind of the, the theme is recruit what you need or what will benefit everybody, so. What I would like to find out tonight is that the, uh, uh, wish of the council to move forward on, uh, marketing that property. And how, how we do it, uh, Steve, and who we do it to, that'll come later. But John, wouldn't you agree, just get a flavor from the council? Should we move on it, or should we leave it as is, Grandpa's Barn indefinitely?
So stop, Paul, we've got one for moving on it, at least.
Are we gonna include the, uh, parking lot?
Well, you know, that's, wouldn't that be kind of up for conjecture about?
I'm thinking, that parking lot gives you that corner, if you're a, if you're gonna put in any kind of large building, you'd want a corner, I think, and not just be stuck in a...
Or maybe some ground floor parking and...
Parking could be moved around, or, or we could find another place for it, but...
There'll be a lot of negative screaming if you decide to sell that parking lot, I can tell you that. In fact, the, 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 the noise I get is, they want more parking. They wanna tear down the Glander Building and, and, and pave that area. But the problem is, it costs money to haul that building away and pave that. And, uh, the, the, the benefit of the parking spots that we might get probably wouldn't be worth it for, for what it would cost to, to haul that building away and pave that. So, you know, that's why I'm thinking, if, if, if there's a buyer out there that, you know, recruit him.
So do we, do we look at, um, um, securing the services of CETA again? And having them help us with a bit of a market analysis?
Or do we just send it back to Port Authority and say, yes, the, the council is in favor of looking at options and if it was favorable to sell the property? And maybe you don't wanna put, insert it favorable?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's...
Yeah. I think the Port Authority was looking for support from the council to do something different there.
Oh, we, we've been sitting on this property for, let's see here, um, I have enough, four years off, two at six, at least another four, probably like ten years now. You know, we got to make a decision, I want to, we're gonna do here. Um, you know, uh, a while back, we had a individual out at the industrial park that was interested in building something down there. Um, unfortunately, that individual was told they weren't available when they were, uh, so they ended up adding on out there. Um, and I think we're, uh, we've had a couple of those happen in the last ten years or whatever it's been. And, uh, so we need to figure out, and I, you know, I, I don't think we need, uh, all three lots as parking. Um, I think we might need one of the lots as parking. I don't know. Um, that's why we gotta park and group together and identify spots, but until we discuss it as a council and as Port Authority, uh, nothing's gonna happen. And, uh, they're just gonna keep falling apart like they are, so. So it's, that's, that's, I don't know. That's my response.
I'd be in favor of putting them up for sale. Um, I don't think it's good to make parking out of the two existing ones. I don't know if it's good to take parking away, though, without compensating for it by selling the one that's already a parking lot. I've been in Winona for a couple of years, and what I've heard a lot from people in that city is that everybody complained about parking downtown, so they started tearing old buildings down and making parking lots. And they really regret doing that.
Regressed?
They regret doing that, um...
Oh, regret, okay.
Yeah, they regret doing it. Uh, for a while, the downtown's been really dead, um, just from what I've heard from people talking. And they're trying to actually revitalize downtown by getting more stuff, more living, um, more businesses. And, uh, I think we just need to worry about parking as we move forward. We can figure something out.
Yeah. John, you're, uh, Port Chair, you got enough, uh, feedback on?
I do. Chad's here, he'll remember.
How's it, we got it recorded?
Got it recorded, we're good. All right, one question, Chad, that we, we...
Uh, one question, Chad, that we, we did that lease on, uh, with Minda underneath the bridge. Did that expand? We talked about maybe expanding that?
No, we dropped that expansion when that development agreement fell through.
Do we want to look at doing that?
We certainly can.
I, I think we should.
I think let's let the parking crew, I mean, this, this stuff can all move together at the same time, I think. Uh, so as I hear it, you know, this'll kind of be a Port Authority initiative, so if there's concerns, we can work through this.
Yep.
I think it's, I mean, this is the wing of, this is the way it's supposed to work. The Port Authority is the EDA and ideas and thoughts can go through the Port Authority and ultimately if approved there, recommend it up here.
I think the thing kind of hinges on the word market. And I, there's two ways to look at it, one is the hang a for sale sign.
Yeah.
Another one is, I guess is what the mayor said, is we need to perhaps plan on what type of industry, business, whatever, that we want to encourage to, to go in there. And I think, uh, if we have economic development plan, we need to look at that, how that's gonna work together with that.
Right. Yeah. And what, what, what I imagine the Port Authority does, they'll bring back what we consider to be a good option. We've, and...
Supported with?
Supported with whatever.
Pro forma financials and things that, like we did with the hotel, with what would be a tax base? What would that do to the general fund, those types of things? We got all that information, and I would agree with the mayor on that as well. I mean, we could simply turn and, any, any expansion in tax base is good, of course, but could be good. Um, but, you know, maximizing it is certainly a, a goal of the Port Authority and I would assume the council as well. But, you know, I think the Port Authority, the EDA is the way to go with this and the body that should be weighing all of these options, so if there's ideas out there, Port Authority meets third Tuesday, third Tuesday of every month.
Yep, right here.
And John always takes phone calls and emails, right?
All the time.
Okay, I think, uh, we've got, John, if you're satisfied, you've got a feeling of which way to go? We'll move on to...
Do you have a remark, though?
I just wanted to say, for marketing this property, you know, you need to market it in conjunction with the riverfront development now, because that'll be a big draw for anybody that wants to bring in, you know, entertainment or...
Yeah, whatever that might be, yes, exactly, I agree, a hundred percent.
We have met with, um, I would say over the last six months, two plus potential, uh, people that were looking to come into town and, and part of that meeting included NEC plans and riverfront plans uh, for expansion down there, you know, that, and that's kind of what we're touting as, um, you know, what the future is to hold, so.
Alright, very good.
Okay, we can continue, we're going to move on to, uh, general business item four. In my notes said Chad will give us an update on the Army Corps dredging management plan.
Yeah, um, things have ramped up again. It was a little quiet for a couple of weeks after the comment period ended and the Corps took their time to go through the alternatives. We received a list of alternatives of, of eighty-eight different alternatives that were submitted to the Corps. Uh, they sent us the entire list that they had. Uh, they did not whittle it down, um, based on probability or anything there, so. Um, we met last Thursday, um, with stakeholders, basically property owners, uh, county officials, um, state representatives. Um, Mike, Mike Goggan was unavailable but, or unavailable, but Representative Haley and Representative Druskowski were here. Um, this was basically the work group, local work group, no involvement from the Corps on that. And we went through and we've whittled that down to about twenty, twenty or so items that we are continuing to explore. Uh, we're gonna further cut that list on Thursday of this week with that group, uh, to be ready for a meeting on, uh, October tenth up at, uh, uh, the Corps offices with the agencies that are involved, so. Um, that list by the end of Thursday, we're hoping to have three to five real solid, um, options, which I think we can easily get to, uh, as alternatives that do not, uh, affect landowners and for the most part, you know, doesn't affect city residents, um, in great, in great volume, so. Um, that meeting is on ten-ten, and then in addition, the mayor and I have a meeting, uh, with the new general, uh, of the St. Paul District. He's touring, um, problem projects or high, uh, high, uh...
Highly visible?
Highly, highly visible projects.
The ER nightmare.
Obviously, he's going from Fargo to here, uh, with the Red River reroute up in Fargo. Um, and then he's coming here, uh, to meet with us, uh, you know, in a closed meeting that will be open to the public after, after we have that discussion, so. Things are certainly ramping up and we've got a lot, uh, a lot of work to do. First, to just be ready for Thursday and then secondly, to be ready for, uh, next Tuesday up at the Corps offices, so.
Questions?
Uh, just one, um, as far as the, the parcels and stuff, uh, I know you don't want to make those public and so forth, but is council able to view those?
The parcels, are there additional options?
Yeah.
Um, with the exception of one, I don't have a problem talking about any of them. Um, the city submitted the, some of them were submitted in the alternatives that wouldn't be, wouldn't yield a lower cost by any means from what was identified. But what the city, one of the options that I think will stick from the city's perspective is, uh, the use of what was identified in the plan is Wabashaw Sand and Gravel Three, I believe.
Yep.
Um, out by the high school.
Wabashaw Sand and Gravel High School?
Wabashaw Sand and Gravel High School is what it was identified as. Uh, we submitted that as a particular plan that we actually did a lot of work on and costing it out and, and, uh, looking at it. So, that'll probably be one of the alternatives at the end of the day. Um, some of the other, uh, options that I think will still hold weight would include public land use to put it back either in the river for, um, habitat. Um, or there is some invasive species that are highlighted, uh, plants. Um, what's that plant? Uh, Brian, do you remember?
Hillfoam?
No.
Purple lewis tree?
No.
Oh, uh...
So many.
Reed canary grass?
Yeah, reed canary grass, yeah, there's, uh, lots areas out in the Big Lake area that they would consider perhaps covering, um, with sand, so. Um, but other than that, Dean, uh, there's only one that involves a private, uh, private property owner that I'm not comfortable yet, uh, disclosing, so.
Appreciate that. And Chad, the alternative is the original plan?
Alternative is the original plan, yes.
Which isn't pretty at all?
Which isn't pretty at all, right. Um, you know, there, uh, I think us as a city is gonna have to be a little creative when it comes to the possible ultimate solutions that are picked, so we just need to be ready for that. We need to always remember what that alternative is, which is the original plan. Um, when we look at some of these, uh, alternatives that are coming up, so. And when I say city, you know, it, that mostly includes the seven people around this, around this table with the vote. We need to be cognizant of, of, of again, what is that first if we have to go back to that original plan? I will say still, I feel, I, I do feel confident. We've had some good, uh, we had a good meeting this week with the Corps, just us and the Corps. Um, and also, uh, uh, just discussions that we've had via emails that we've traded, so. Uh, barging is still an option, Craig and, and, or Dean, I'm sorry, barging to, uh, uh, other places where there is capacity. I know Lake City's playing a pretty proactive role with, uh, their Semstone and waterfront development. They've been, uh, pushing the Corps and pushing, uh, them to, uh, in fact, I think they're looking at spur track to offload, uh, rail cars if they were loaded here and brought up there to fill that, uh, that existing pit up there. And then ultimately use it probably for some expansion projects there, so. It's, uh, there's been ideas brought up with the Port Authority, um, that we're further exploring as well with the port playing a intermediary role, uh, that could make things, uh, less bureaucratic, so to speak. It's hard to imagine bringing in another government agency and then making it less bureaucratic, but that is a possibility, so. Lot of different tangents here.
Alright.
Lot of time spent, so. We're still under our fifty thousand. Uh, the county has, I think we're still under fifty. Brian's about the only one on the clock right now, but meetings are free, so.
Not right now.
Other than that, uh, the county's got their ten thousand. Um, but I, I still, I think we can get ourselves to either a new draft and then we'll take a look again where we're at, so.
So Chad, we got three meetings coming up, uh, probably be by the end of the month, or you do, with, uh...
Yes, sir, and, and Craig will be attending, um...
Yeah.
Those on behalf of the council.
Good. So, we are working on it.
Just a little.
More than a little. Um, do you have, do you ever remember them saying when they'll ha- um, have a final go on it, final decision? That question comes up.
The middle of December, we will know if a new draft will be submitted.
Okay, but we don't know what...
And if a new draft is submitted, it will most likely be something that we've already in concept reviewed and looked at and are comfortable with.
Okay.
And gotten feedback on from...
So, middle of December will be a decision if there'll be an, a revised plan?
Well, yeah, we'll, we'll know by the middle of December, give or take, either way.
Alright.
Because otherwise it moves into finalization.
Yeah.
And then we talk about next steps.
Alright, let's move on. Uh, Craig, I got you down for eight point five.
So, um, I was looking at the ATV and golf cart ordinances and, um, the main reason that they're in here, as I understand it, is that they're, we're changing the, um, permit period from one year to three years. I don't have a problem with that. One of the questions I had on the ATV were, uh, we're also changing who's issuing the permits. It's going from the police department to the city of Wabashaw or its representative. So, um, and I think that's how the golf cart works too. So, who is that that does that?
Patty does that, or if Patty's not here, Wendy'll step up, but primarily Patty.
Okay, so, basically, it, I'm guessing how, how does it work? Do the people just plunk down their money and, and then they get the permit? And then they're responsible to make sure that their vehicle is compliant with all of these, uh...
We have to show...
Provisions?
We have to show proof of insurance.
Yes.
And we have to list the operators and then...
Those are things we require.
Patty would type up a little card or a piece of paper and we carry that in the vehicle saying that this person, this person, this person can operate that ATV and, and the insurance.
Okay.
Which is a good thing, because then the, the, if the police stops one, one of those operators, listed operators better be in the, in the driver's seat.
So, the, um, it says the city issues an operation permit upon verica- verification that the applicant has and then it goes on standard mufflers, brakes adequate, things like that, so, we're not...
We're not going out physically inspecting it, we're making them aware that those are the things that they need to have.
But, and one of the reasons I bring that up is I've seen, I've seen, uh, ATVs running around town, um, with very young operators. One of them just got off my school bus and then he almost ran into me with his ATV. I don't think he was sixteen and he certainly didn't have a helmet on. Um, I've, I've seen, heard ATVs go by me, uh, far, far than five hundred feet away, I can hear them like crazy, so I don't know about the mufflers on some of them. And, um, I've also seen a lot of golf carts that have no slow-moving permit sign on them around town. So, I'm just wondering, is that a, are these people are just kind of sliding in and out? Or, um, are they, do they have a permit and they're just not complying? Can we get some more enforcement on something like that? I'm thinking if we're gonna allow ATVs, which, uh, can be a nuisance, they're not a regular vehicle, so a lot of times people aren't looking for them, that we want them to be in compliance with the, with the ordinance. Same thing with the golf carts. They're not a, it's not a amusement park ride, it's, you're operating on a city street, so.
I think what it, it certainly, it, it comes down to the enforcement. Um, if you see that, I would say call it, because obviously we can't be, and our officers can't be in every spot.
Can't be in every place, but, and a lot of times I'm...
Whoa, there he goes. Yeah, right, right, so, but, I think Joe, the, the folks could pay a little special attention to that for, make sure i's are dotted and t's are crossed and...
Under, uh, subsection one of, uh, ATV, um, I don't have my glasses on, so, uh, I don't see anything about, uh, uh, being prohibited from parks. Uh, I see sidewalks providing, preventing traffic, but I don't see, uh, uh...
I think section D takes care of that, says on any other public place or ground except as maybe specifically permitted by the city code.
Yeah, that would cover it.
Alright, I'll make a motion that we...
I got a couple of comments left on this too.
Yep.
Um, can you clarify, um, the twenty dollar fee? Is that, it's wasn't real clear, is that gonna be twenty dollars per year? So, it'll be sixty dollars for a three-year permit or is it gonna be twenty dollars for a three-year permit?
Twenty dollars for a three-year per- permit.
Also, I think you talked about requiring turn signals for UTVs. I don't think that's a realistic requirement for one thing, most UTVs don't have turn signals. And, um, and also, I think we need to coordinate the verbiage in this with the way the sheriff department is handling, um, UTV, ATV registrations for the county. Because at the county, you don't even need to, you don't get a sticker or anything, you just... So, but you should, you should have...
It's in the system, then.
Yeah, we should have the same, the same, uh, definitions and stuff like, basically a class one ATV or UTV is, has less than a fifty-inch wheelba- or width of the tires and a class two is between fifty and sixty-five. So, they don't have this, they don't break it down like you have in section definitions here. So, I think that should be coordinated with the sheriff department, just to make sure everybody's on the same page to make our police chief's job a little easier for any enforcement of this.
So, are you saying, Jeff, just so I can be clear here, um, making a note here, sorry. Um, you would rather just follow the sheriff's process, which I know they have a, uh, simply it's listed in the system under that person's name that they have a registered ATV or UTV within the county?
No, I'm, I'm fine with the way we do it.
You, you're okay with us still putting a sticker on it and all that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that's what we used, that's what we did till a couple of years ago, I think.
Yeah.
You know, and then, but, so I'm fine with that, but, like I said, I think the legal verbiage should be compare with what the, uh,
Okay.
county's doing.
Alright.
And I'll tell you what, I...
We can tidy that up.
And I appreciate the privilege of being able to dr- operate my UTV in the city of Wabashaw and on the county roads. That's all I can say about that.
It's getting to be a popular, uh, mode.
Would there, uh, be a problem, Chad, with table and that, bringing it back?
Well, yeah, with, with this amount of changes, I think we just clean them up a little bit and bring it back for another first reading.
Okay, right.
It's simple enough, there, there's nothing time-sensitive on this. We just wanted to be able to start catching them come January first, uh, to catch the three-year licenses.
Okay, so we pulled that one and, uh...
So, we'll just go ahead.
Everything's fine.
Now, you pulled just...
Uh, eight-five.
The ATV. The motorized golf cart is still okay, okay, excellent.
Good. Okay, we can move on.
Let's move forward for a second reading. We'll just clean this ATV, UTV one up some more.
And we can move on to, uh, accepting the donations. Brian, you've been a little quiet tonight, can you help us out on that?
I can.
Okay.
I lost my sheet and I found... I lost my sheet and I found it. Okay, we have, uh, donations to accept, whereas the city of Wabashaw is generally authorized to accept donations. Um, do I need to read that whole thing? Okay.
No.
All right, we just wanna thank everyone for their donations. Um, children's library expansion project donations, five thousand dollars from Jerry and Mary Arns, twenty-five hundred for Quick Trip and Quick Star, uh, nineteen forty-three, um, that'd be one thousand nine hundred forty-three from Local Giving Day, the WK Foundation and SMIF. Uh, one thousand dollars in memory of Florence Schober by friends and family, five hundred from Jay Considine Charitable Fund, two hundred dollars from John and Sherry Olson, one hundred, Chris and Pam Christopherson, one hundred in memory of Mary Eversman by Patty and Tom Prodey, one hundred Craig and Nancy Falcone, twenty-five in memory of Peter Leckler by Eleanor Groby, twenty in memory of Tammy Loretts, ten from Dean Moyer, um, cash donations, one hundred and forty-nine dollars, um, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, uh, the Carpet Square fundraiser. And that's the list.
Thank you very much to all.
Can I add something to the statement?
Sure.
Yes.
It's more of a statement, um...
Oh, yep.
Uh, I haven't been here that long, like I said, since April and, on the ambulance, and, um, this ambulance would not be possible without the donated time from all of the fourteen on-call volunteers. Um, just to give you an example, if that were expressed as dollars that you would pay a full-time employee such as myself. You all know Linda Walrick, I'm assuming, right? Last month in September, as of nine-twenty-seven, she put in two hundred and one hours just in the month of December for volunteer time. If we were to pay her an average of a hundred and fifty hours, which she works more than that per month, at a rate of fifteen dollars an hour, which is less than what I make and she's had ten more years of an experience than I have had, um, that would be two thousand dollars, two, two thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand, sorry, two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars a month. And that would be twenty-seven thousand dollars a year from one person volunteering on the ambulance. And there are fourteen other people that put in thirty-six to forty-eight hours as a minimum of volunteer time that they put in. Um, I just wanna acknowledge that their donation to the city, um, is outstanding. They do excellent work, um, and, uh, so, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Amanda.
All of our emergency services.
All right, did we have a motion to accept donations?
I'll move.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, same sign, passed unanimously. We are up to adjournment.
I'll move.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, same sign, passed unanimously. Thank you, council members, good job.